Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the Business and Housing Policy Committee, including those listening online. Time is 6:30pm on Tuesday, the 22nd of June 2021. And this meeting is being held in person in Walton Suite in the Guildhall, Winchester. So, welcome back to those who haven't already been back. I'm now going to introduce the members and officers that are present in the meeting. On my left, I have Richard Botham, Strategic Director, Resources. Further on, I have Councillor Isaac, Councillor Scott, Councillor Lumby. My head has got blank, Julie.
No, Julie Knight.
Julie Knight, so I can't see your names. Sue Robbins, Councillor Todd, Dave Shaw, David Light from TACT, Councillor Bronk, Councillor Radcliffe and Councillor Fern. And I'm Councillor Anne Weir, Chair of the Committee. I particularly like to welcome Councillors Bronk, Fern, Isaacson, Radcliffe to the meeting as new members of the committee for this municipal year. Can I also advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website? And a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details under Council Services, More Services, Councillors and Committees Calendar. Or please select the committee and meeting date that you are interested, where the recording will remain thereafter. Again, welcome David from TACT. I'll move on to item one, Apologies.
Yes, thank you Chair. We have apologies from Councillor Crask and also from Cabinet Member Councillor Lern.
Thank you David. So, yes, we are one member short this evening as our deputies were not available. But I think we've got a good turnout on the whole. Are there any disclosures of interest that need to be made regarding the business before us this evening? If so, would you like to state, Councillor Lumby?
Thank you Chair. I think this is the first time I've done it, so I get the word wrong, Councillor Todd can correct me. But I think I have to declare a personal but non prejudicial interest. I've only learned the need to pronounce that properly as a county councillor in relation to anything that relates to my role there.
Thank you. Councillor Todd?
Yes, I'm not a member of this committee, but I think the verity is helpful to make a sound of declaration that I am a county councillor.
Avoiding the word prejudice, please.
Councillor Scott?
Yes, thank you Chair. Item nine is referenced to the housing revenue accounts rather than funding because I'm a council tenant, I say declare.
Thank you, Councillor Scott. There are no more declarations of interest, thank you. Okay, moving on to item three, Appointment to the Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations? Councillor Fern, is that seconded? Councillor Radcliffe, thank you. Any other nominations? If not, Councillor Fern duly elected as the Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you Chair.
Can we turn to the minutes, item four, the minutes of the previous meeting? Can I have your approval of those minutes, please? Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Chair, can I make a comment please? As a sort of lead in from the minutes. Last time I made a point of actually bringing housing to the front of our business. And I thank you Chair that you've done that. And I also made a point of actually bringing papers to this committee. Again, thank you Chair that this has now happened. So, as a back of the minutes, thank you for those two actions.
Thank you for raising that, Councillor Scott. And certainly we're going to be taking to those questions throughout the rest of the year. Members, there were also a couple of points in the minutes relating to information that was requested by the committee this time. And I believe Mr Gosteloe, Andrew Gosteloe, has circulated that information to you by email this afternoon. So, if you've got any further questions on that, perhaps you could get back to Andrew after the meeting, but I hope that that's helpful. That relates to the distribution of the grants under the Covid scheme and to the membership of partnership groups in city. Thank you. So, moving on to item five, the dates and times of future meetings. I think those are noted. That's all right?
Chair, may I just have a brief? Oh no, I'm premature, I was on work programme.
Yep, so we'll move on to item six, the Work Programme for 2021/22. Councillor Lumby?
I've forgotten that. No, just in terms of the work programme, and thank you for bringing it forward. It seems to me that as I read somewhere that the Green contract was due to be agreed by July, although I think in reality it's likely to be a later date. Is that something that should be brought forward again in the floor of the board to the next committee?
Sue, can you make a comment on that?
Yes, I'm happy to respond on that. You're well spotted, and yes, we would plan to bring back the revised and updated strategy for your consideration at the September meeting. Were you agreement?
Thank you. That's very welcome, if we could admit it, that would be helpful. I've also got a question around housing papers in March. We moved the March date back, or the quarter four meeting, back to March next year so that we could get some, we would have a chance to look at some of the strategy papers around housing. It would be good to see in September some proposals on those housing papers for the March agenda, if that's all right, Chair. I think we're looking at perhaps our new homes plans and the housing strategy, which we were too early to see those papers before, no way to cabinet this year, if I've got this set. Thank you. Right, if that's all right, I think the Work Programme is noted and I'm sure that it will evolve as we move through the years. So, thank you for that. And moving on to item seven, Chairperson's announcements. I've just got one announcement, I just wanted to bring the committee's attention to the Next Generation event that is being held online as a virtual event on the 14th of July. This is part of our task and finish group around housing for younger people. And we're very excited about the programme. It runs from 2:30 to 4:00 on the 14th of July. You can find out more details about this on the City Council website. Julie, I don't know whether you want to add anything about that, but I just thought it was worth mentioning that we're moving forward with that project.
Yes, it's been a really interesting project and those that have been involved in it have really engaged with it. We've also made sure that they're the younger generation that are talking to young people. So, it's not based on my thoughts and some of us, more older members of the group, but it's really positive. We had some really good responses, we did some digital surveys, we found some quite interesting outcomes. People very keen to get, as you would expect, on the home ownership ladder. So, we've got this conference, we're trying to make sure it's been led by one of the graduates best. So, it's a young person talking to young people. But we've also got members taking questions because they were very keen to be able to hear from the decision makers. So, it's going to be, could be quite an interesting afternoon, I think. But yeah, we're looking forward to the conference and hoping that everybody shows and we have a really healthy, interesting debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think that's all I had to say at this point. So, I'll move on to item eight, Public Participation.
We have nobody registered, Chair.
David, just before we move into the main agenda, were there any points that TACT wanted to raise at this stage? We do only have the one housing paper this evening.
No, I don't think so at the moment. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Right, so move on then to the business items. Item nine, the HRA Welfare Fund Preventing Homelessness Grant Spending Plans. That's BHP 019 on pages 13 to 20 of the report. Julie, over to you.
Thank you, Councillor Weir. I'm actually coming with a really positive paper, which is always nice to take to a committee. Really interesting to have some discussions with you and really for your comment on the suggested proposed spending plans of the HRA Welfare Fund and the Homelessness Prevention Grant. The resources have come from a one-off allocation of funding from the existing HRA balance, and that was approved at council on the 24th of Feb. And the Ministry of Housing Communities and Local Government allocation of £330,095 from the annual homelessness prevention grant. The purpose of the government grant is to give local authorities control and flexibility in managing the homelessness pressures and supporting those who are at risk of homelessness. And it's expected that the council use it to fully enforce the legislation in place to help end rough sleeping by increasing activity to prevent single homelessness, reducing temporary accommodation for families and maximising housing options for families. As you know, the homelessness prevention strategy has made a pledge to end rough sleeping in Winchester by 2023, and that's endorsed through the council plan. So, just to give you some background around that. It's really informing and helping our more vulnerable tenants with recovery following the pandemic. And that had quite a detrimental impact on many households' financial security. And studies have shown an increase in characteristics of vulnerability for adults, including poor health, low financial resilience and negative life events. There has been a significant rise in people losing their jobs, being forced to take salary cuts or accept reduced hours because of the pandemic. Working age adults have been disproportionately hit by the virus, in particular, young adults, Black, Asian and minority ethnic adults and self-employed. And financial hardship and poor mental health often go hand in hand and can result in the threat of homelessness. Public Health England research into the impact of the pandemic on the mental health and wellbeing of adults has shown an increase in those experiencing anxiety, stress, low mood and sleep problems. And it's likely that the effects of this will be seen on households and be felt for many months or even years to come. So, the £500,000 has been allocated as a one-off sum and the spending detail plans for that are set out within the paper. And I'm sure you don't want me to go through all of them. The headlines are around strategic commissioning, so that's looking at how we commission people to perhaps deal with the exit strategies once we're down with the crisis situation. Digital inclusion, that's highlighted the importance of digital inclusion. And there are many, but there are still significant levels of digital exclusion. And social housing has been highlighted as one of the area where that applies. And so that's something where we're seeking to help with opportunities, with computer skills, help build confidence, awareness of opportunity. And moving on to the welfare personalisation budget, that's to help housing officers on the frontline to be able to be reactive when issues are needed. We've had these before in local welfare allowance funds, and it can be simple things that reasons that tend to fall into debt as well. So, we can help with perhaps purchasing the more unusual things, school uniforms, white goods, stuff like that. So, I can go through in more detail if needed. Increase the welfare support capacity, so we are going to need some extra resources on the ground from staff to deliver this. Currently, we're delivering support to households, but 150 tenants with money and benefit advice. And I think we've supported 60 plus tenants with mental health issues. The increase in staffing resources will enable each additional officer, so that's to support another 50 to 60 tenants. And that will enable the service to accept at least another 100 plus referrals. So, whilst it's really useful to have such a resourceful budget, we also need to make sure that we can deliver on the ground with the right commitment. And then moving on to the Homelessness Prevention Grant Spending Plan. This is something that we do on an annual basis, so this is a little bit more established in what we would look at spending the grant on. And that's the Social Inclusion Grant, it's the first one. We currently co-commission with Hampshire County Council Accommodation Support for the Most Complex Single Need Households. We make a small contribution of £50,000 to secure from the grant, and it helps to support the provision of 32 units of accommodation at Westview House and the Sussex Street Housing First Provision. It really does house the most complex needs and trying to prevent people from rough sleeping. And it's obviously helped massively during the pandemic to support those off the streets. The Flexible Prevention Fund, that again is a prevention fund of £50,000 for frontline housing officers, and that's to help prevent homelessness through spend to save initiatives. So, it will reduce the long-term cost for homelessness if we can do some early intervention and engagement tactics that can prevent homelessness and keep people in their homes. So, historically, we've helped with rent arrears and offered low interest loans to help people with rent deposits. And that really does mean that people aren't going to lenders that aren't really the type of lenders that you want them to go to with high interest rates and sharp loans. So, it's helping to stop our own tenants and those facing homelessness getting into further debt. It also covers the severe weather emergency provision, which we as a council have a duty to do. So, in severe weather, whether it's hot or cold, we need to ensure that nobody's sleeping rough on the streets. We do that in partnership with the Trinity Centre and the Night Shutter. The next one was the Young Person's Emergency Beds. We've been funding two emergency beds with high level support for local vulnerable young people aged 70 to 21, with A to Dominion for some time, and we'd like to continue to offer that. And it's again, a really, really good spend to save. It is £10,000 to secure those two emergency beds. We have a housing jigsaw module, an IT system that we want to bring in. It's a new model that provides a platform designed to support local authorities and the voluntary sector and wider partners to manage and monitor the rough sleeping pathways. So, that will include all our outreach work and all our intelligence. So, we're hoping to add that module on to our current IT service. And again, staffing resources, we have seen the Homelessness Reduction Act that came in in 2017 and Covid-19 has placed a number of additional burdens and responsibilities on the housing options team. Most other health patron authorities have since increased their resources and we've maintained our service as it is. But you can see the comparisons within the paper. So, we have four full-time officers and East Hans Borough Council have five full-time and one part-time officer, and Eastleigh have six full-time officers. And I would say the demand of single homelessness isn't as high as we suffer in Winchester. So, we're really keen to be able to increase resources to help deliver the preventative work and have a long-term saving to the cost of delivering homelessness services. Both saving plans will be left with some contingency funding of £99,920 for the HRA Welfare Fund and £62,054 remaining of the Homelessness Prevention Grant. And that allows us to tweak our offer and also look at further need. So, for me, as I say, it feels a really positive paper. We're trying to look after our most vulnerable within the community. Both spending plans are crucial to continue to build recovery of our frontline services, to maintain good and positive service delivery changes that have come about during the pandemic and to ensure help and support is readily available for our most in need communities to live well. So, I hope you find the paper as positive and we can have a good, healthy chat about any suggestions you want to make around the paper or any gaps you see or anything you think we've missed an opportunity to support. It'd be really interesting to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. I mean, it's an extremely broad paper and fantastic detail and ambition in it. I'm sure there will be a lot of comment. I can see Councillor Scott, Councillor Lumby. David, did you want to make a comment at this stage?
Yeah, just make a comment that you had to take on extra staff on the men of health side with this welfare fund. And that takes quite a bit of money out of the budget. But I noticed you've got the £300,000 backup from the government. Is that right?
Well, they are two separate funding streams. So, one is around more our strategic housing duty around homelessness. And the other fund is around supporting our tenants and those facing homelessness and those that are in our more vulnerable housing. So, they are separate budgets. With regards to the staffing resource, it's fantastic to have such a great welfare budget to go out and do that work, but we are going to need the staff to deliver it because at the moment, that full capacity with their caseloads. So, in order to reach those in need tenants, we are going to need to increase the staffing resources to be able to, or that would be my suggestion. I think we might struggle to spend the whole budget otherwise.
Right, thanks.
Does that address your question? Thank you. Councillor Scott?
Chair, if I may, I'd be bold to have a few questions. I mean, this is the night, if that's okay. The first one is on page 13, after the, or the close of the first paragraph, when you were discussing with TACT. And then you mentioned other tenants. Is TACT not a representation for tenants? Or have you got another sort of way of engaging tenants outside of TACT? Because that's a bit confusing when you said TACT and tenants. And moving on to page 14, it's a quite depressing paragraph, actually 2.2, but you spell it out really well. And in fact, your paper's really, really well detailed here about life with the pandemic at this moment in time and the government impact on households and stuff like that. Moving forward, Julie, under the sort of tenancy, are we sort of feeling a bit threatened with our tenancy because of problems of loss of jobs, loss of salary, perhaps arrears are being built up and maybe not be able to keep up to their debt plans and so on like that? Be interesting to know a little bit more about what support is currently being offered because of the sheer impacts of the pandemic. And under the 2.9, under the sort of commissioning element, it'd be good to know, is this a result because of the pandemic or will we be moving along this line anyway to try and broaden the approach with, because obviously the City Council can't do everything. But will we broaden the approach to actually bringing other people to work alongside us to achieve this goal of homelessness by a couple of years' time? And the spin-off on that is, do we then see that we will no longer then have to do the counter for homelessness, which is what we normally do annually or biannually? And in respect of quite a lot that comes through that is the health issues. We've got high level of referrals at this moment in time. And just to give us a taste of actually exactly what is the situation amongst our tenants at this moment in time, tenants stroke, communities and people outside of it, we'll actually sort of engage in it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Scott. Lots for me to think about there and answer. I think I've written them all down, but nudge me if I miss one. TACT and tenants, we mean, yes, TACT represents, it's the official platform for tenants, but we also have involved tenants that maybe aren't part of TACT and they've been recruited through digital surveys, et cetera. So, that's just a cross view from tenants really. But TACT will be formally representing and we're involved in helping us to set up the priorities with Councillor Lern at a consultation day. 2.2, although the pandemic has certainly focused us on the need of tenants, it isn't simply as a result of the pandemic. That has certainly paid a contribution. But we are a landlord that lets properties that aren't furnished, that don't have carpets. We have people in universal credit, lower income tenants that come into our properties and again, struggle to deal with some of the more basic needs that they have. So, what we're trying to do with this, with the funding, isn't just around arrears and debts and financial hardship. It's also about trying to make sure that people have the homes that they can live in and are able to move in without having to get into debt really. And we've done a big piece of work around tenants not going to unethical lenders. So, if we can help with that in any way, then we are looking at all sorts of different ways that we can support our tenants. And some of them can be very simple things. We had somebody who was a taxi driver that couldn't afford their licence. And if we could help through some of the welfare funding to provide that licence, which we did through another fund, then he could go to work, then he could clear his rental room. So, it's that sort of an offer we want. We want it to be super flexible, we want it to be able to meet all the different needs because people all come with such different needs. So, we don't want it to be too much of a flat funding, we want it to be able to be reactive to whatever. And I've mentioned school uniforms, there's lots of other things that we've done that just helps tenants with that little nudge to get them back on their feet and then we can move away. So, it doesn't become a dependent fund, it becomes something to help out within crisis. 2.9 with the commissioning of services, that really is around, you're quite right, the council can't do everything. And also, as a landlord, we wear two hats. So, we might be enforcing in one hat and then trying to support in the other. So, we're trying to split that so that we have people, which we've done really well with the Tenancy Sustainment Team that came in in 2019. That followed the withdrawal of commissioning from Hampshire County Council. So, that floating support that we could refer to wasn't there. So, we had a tenancy sustainment team, it sat on the homelessness side more, the housing option side. We realised that 85 to nearly 90% we were supporting were our tenants. So, we've moved that now into the HRA budget and sits under Amber Russell, who has lots of experience obviously of working with tenants. And that's now going to be headed up by a new member of staff. And we'll be looking at a much more flexible offer around our tenants. We want to help those that maybe fall between the gaps, so they're not picked up with welfare benefits, but they are on low income. And we want to make sure that those people are sustained to work and have the home that you and I would expect to have really. So, trying to help them with that. So, the commissioning will be around trying to help people get into employment, it will be helping people tackle energy bills, to take advantage of benefits and grants offered through the government, financial support for tenants moving into a new home, as I've talked about. And that really is to tackle appliance and furniture poverty because that really is a growing need for tenants. And as I said, to prevent tenants falling into debt by borrowing from people that they shouldn't be borrowing from, just the bioessential furnishings. So, that was the idea of that proposed grant. We will continue to do a count for homelessness, we didn't do one this year obviously, or we did actually, I think we went out just with the two members. And yes, we have got high referrals and we're expecting, you know, who knows what's going to happen in the future with furlough ends and all of that sort of thing. Yeah, thank you.
Julie, thank you. That was extremely informative and helpful. Councillor Lumby, I think you've got to...
Thank you Chair. I thought, I wasn't sure whether David wanted to comment on a comment Julie made about the TACT, where you were sort of hovering. Did you want to jump in there, David?
No, well, I was going to say that they do consult with TACT as the main representatives of the tenants. But they also do, like Julie said, put there for people that can't get to TACT and to get a wider view from our other tenants. Thanks.
Apologies Chair, I'm just, I can see David hovering. Thank you Julie, and thank you for, as you say, a very positive paper. And I was very pleased to see this one come forward. I think its origins came from, I think it was under this committee's budget discussion as to the concern that we were putting rents up, but that actually the time when people couldn't necessarily always afford it and therefore to find a way to assist was a good thing. Because Councillor Scott has set precedent, I'm going to ask a couple of questions if I may, Chair. Thank you very much. First of all, and it's just a clarification one, you referred at various points in the paper and you used the words to our tenants. Can I be clear that the grants here, where they go to tenants, are to all tenants, both in the whole sort of array of social housing? So, whether they have an RP landlord or whether it's a Winchester City Council landlord? It's not just directly where we are the landlord, the intention is this will be covered? Do you mind that one?
Sure. Yes, it would be for our tenants, for the City Council tenants. Sure. Yes, it would be for our tenants, for the, for city council tenants. But it, it also assists those that are threatened with homelessness within private rented tenancies or RPs, if, if that was the case. So it's around supporting our statutory homelessness duties if people need accommodation, they're in temporary accommodation, et cetera. But on the whole, yes, the, the grant comes from tenants' rents. So it, it's reinvested back into, to our city council tenants.
So does that, that, that leads to the second question. Does, does that lead to gaps and groups of people who aren't being fully funded? And the broader question, and it's possibly an unfair one, but in this, the, the selection of boxes, are there other things that you would like to have done that you think maybe have been left out or, or on the future list? And one more question to follow that. You want to ask that one?
Sure. I think maybe the, there was slight confusion around the paper in that they're two separate grants actually. And, and the, the welfare one is very much, as I said, paid through the rental income. So that's quite right that that's really invested in, into our tenants. The homelessness grant is one that's received from central government. And that's always been used to help all other residents across the community. So that's to support them, even if they're unoccupied. Anybody threatened with homelessness, it's much more, it's much more proactive and preventative if we can prevent that threat of homelessness. So that grant will pick up those that slip through. And that does, I mean, sometimes include registered providers, but we do expect registered providers now to providing their own tenancy sustainment. And many, many are, and there's some great examples of that with RPs. With regards to whether there are things that I would like to have, have funded. I, I think we've, I think we've pretty much covered the spectrum that we want at this particular time. With the homelessness grant, we can revisit on a year to year basis. I think the most important bit of the homelessness grant is that we're, we're doing everything we can to prevent homelessness and to reach that target of having. And at the moment, I'm really proud to say we have around two people sleeping rough on the streets that we're working very closely with that are quite embedded in rough sleeping. So it's going to take a lot of work for us for them to trust us and come in and work with us. So that's really working why we want to continue that work. And with our tenants, as I say, it's very much about helping them in recovery, but also to have the kind of things that perhaps we sometimes take advantage of, take for granted rather. And, wrong word, very much so. Yeah, please edit that. And, and what we really want to do is, is make sure that, and it, and it's, it's growing in the sector, that we're not setting our tenants up to get, to get into debt as soon as they, as soon as they take on a tenancy. So really working around those new homes and making sure we hit people that are working as well, but on low incomes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That, that, that's useful. Just to sort of, there are sort of two mentions left, but I promise you it's definitely no more than that. The, the next one, and it, it does follow on from that, which is that the pots here are quite, some of the pots are very big, some are bigger. The figures, I'm sure we've worked out, but do we need to be prescriptive in terms of amounts in boxes? Or should we, or should you basically have the flexibility to move between pots? If one is not being used, but another one is being overused. We, we wouldn't necessarily want to come back to committee for approvals for that. Should it be that you can move things around within that?
I, I think if we were able to justify a case, then we would be able to do that with the budget line. But we also have our, our funding, our reserve funding that we can use if we need to top up other areas as well. So I think we, we tried to do the workings. Some of them are very set and, and that, that won't change. The, the commissioning work that we're doing with the county, et cetera, the housing jigsaw model, staffing resources, I guess. But some of the commissioning, yes, we may well find that we're commissioning one agency when we'd like to change and commission another access, another agency. One of the things we're, we're really exploring is helping people with hoarding. Because that's such a time consuming support effort really, because it takes many years to, to help people through that type of support. So yes, it might be that we think, well, actually we need a bit more budgeting there. So I'm hoping we'll have that flexibility and it's probably a good point to maybe not be too, not be too set on the, on the amounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I think that, that's a sensible and useful way of doing it. And just finally, on the, the additional resourcing, and you know, your table is, is stark on that. But obviously different staff costs different amounts of money. Is there somewhere a, a comparison as to what the cost per, or the total cost for the relevant officers are putting to the councils?
Now, that, that's a really good point and we haven't done that. And that'd be interesting to see where we come out. But certainly I can do that. Yeah, more than happy to.
Chair, yeah, just, just to pick up on one of the, the points that councillor Lumby raised, and that was around the, the welfare fund and it being H R A funded. So it is very much targeted at city council tenants. And the, the, I can't remember what you're calling the team now, but the team that will be administering that fund though, is, does provide generic support. So if, 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 if someone contacted them who wasn't one of our, our tenants, it desperately needed support, of course, they, of course, they would signpost them and help them and, and make sure that they get the support they need. I think we do see it as a generic service, albeit because it's H R A funded, it has to be predominantly our, our own city council tenants.
Thank you, Richard. I, I have a question. Well, first of all, I mentioned around the digital inclusion area. Obviously, we're going to hear from Andrew a little later on about our, our digital projects. So I would encourage, if you're not already talking to Andrew's team, about ensuring that that's reflected in there. Also about clearly looking at the impact of this, do we have any thoughts about how we're going to measure the impact? And, and look at, get, get some lessons out of what we're doing as we, we sort of venture into these new areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we do. We've, the tenancy sustainment team collect outcomes from all of the work they do through a, a particular template. So we'll be able to compare that and come back to you and say, this is how many people we've supported. And we have had some, some great results. And Richard's, Richard's quite right, actually. We recently, through the tenancy sustainment team, helped somebody that a member contacted us who was really struggling within the private sector to, to navigate D W P benefits. And that individual only had to engage, but a day and a bit, hour wise. And we had somebody sorted out and able to maintain their tenancy. So we, we've got outcomes that we'll need to collate. With regards to the homelessness grant, we have statistical returns to return to the, to central government.
Do we have any further questions? Not, is there any debate, any further comment? Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Julie. Julie, I really want to thank you for this paper and the work that your department does. I, I think the, I mean, the pandemic, as you rightly said, has raised a, a lot of issues or highlighted a lot of issues that probably were already there as well. With the mental health and, and the pressures of work or lack of work or opportunities. And sometimes in, in sort of pockets, in which, I think one of the papers will allude to a bit of deprivation and all that sort of stuff. But sometimes we have to recognise as councillors that when we represent some of our wards, we do have pockets of deprivation. And lack of people aspiring to university, higher education, sort of low budgets and, and struggling with food and free school meals with local private schools and secondary schools. Seeing that on the increase and all that sort of stuff. And it's good to hear that you're stretching out on support even, even for like school uniforms. But it's not just left to the schools to do, but there's like a community of support and cohesion working now. But it's not just the city council here and the schools over here and agencies over here. But it's a, it's a coming together approach really, which is good. I see this as a very sort of proactive paper, to be honest, not a reactive paper. Even though you could see it, but it's reactive to the issue. But I think it's a proactive, I think we're on the right footing as we've been for many years. That's probably why we got the Gold Standard Award for homelessness a few years ago. And, and that speaks with itself with the achievements we've done in that sector really. And many nights on the, a torch to die, go looking for various people under bushes in, in this area, to be honest. So thank you, Julie, and thank you to your team for all what you do. I think this is, when you read aspects of this paper, actually it does break your heart that some different scenarios are there amongst our tenants, amongst our residents in Winchester. But all we can do as, as councillors is serve our communities as best we can do. And, and, and that, to be honest, this paper is, happened to address our residents, our tenants in need. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Scott. And councillor Lumby.
Thank you, Chair. I'll, I'll be quick. We've, we've covered the points and it, it's an excellent paper with lots of options in different directions. And councillor Scott has covered the points very well. The only thing I was going to ask, whether we as a, a committee would be minded to make the suggestion that if, if certain pots were being underutilised and others were being, were in need of cash, there was an ability to move the money around between the different pots? Where that was an option just to embed that flexibility. So, thank you.
Chair, I think that is a, a, a positive suggestion. We are including detailed spending proposals on both of these funds within the out term papers that are coming to cabinet in July. So that's the formal approval of, of the spending plans. And we'll, we'll look at adding a recommendation that gives that flexibility. I, I think our financial procedure will probably allow that flexibility anyway, but it'd be good to, it'd be good to, to disqualify that.
Thank you, Richard. Well, I just wanted to make a few comments of my own. Second councillor Scott's praise for the paper. And he used the works that I'd also written down. And I think we can be really proud as councillors of the proactive approach we're taking here. Strongly community focused and, and shows the, the strong ethos of the council towards its, its, its local community and, and its tenants and, and other residents who, whose lives are, are really being both affected by the pandemic and another difficult situation. So I, I kind of feel we're, we're really showing, we're putting our arms around them and, and taking them forwards in a sustainable way. So thank you for this ambitious paper. We've noted some of the, the comments. We look forward to seeing some feedback on the evaluation of what we're doing. And perhaps we could put into the work programme for, early in the work programme for twenty two, twenty three, that we'll, we'll get a report back, an interim report back on this two year programme. Thank you very much, Julie.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the positive comments. Thank you.
I think we can move on from there to item. Sorry, number, number ten, losing my way here. Various bits of paper. So the green economic development strategy. I think we're moving online with Andrew Osterloh and our team of advisors on this. Can I give this over to you, Sue, to sort of co-ordinate, please?
Yeah, I'll be straight over to Andrew if he's online.
Yeah, I hope everyone's in. Thank you very much. The committee will recall that approval from cabinet was given on the twenty first of October to secure a specialist consultant to develop a ten year green economic development strategy for the district with a budget of forty five thousand pounds funded from the climate emergency programme. Urban foresight in partnership with Third Life Economics have been procured to deliver this piece of work for us. We have given brief updates regarding this work in the last two policy committee meetings. Tonight's meeting provides a key opportunity for the committee to hear progress on the project and more importantly, comment on the work carried out and findings to date as a key part of the engagement and the consensus work stream. To this end, you've received a paper outlining the programme of work and providing an update on the first two work streams, including highlights from the evidence based research and adopted approach which underpins the engagement and consensus stream. Tonight, we'll hear from urban foresight who would focus on the emerging vision and strategy development of this work strand. But to recap, the economic development strategy came to an end last year. And the need for a new strategy, which will set the direction for the next ten years, was obviously required. This strategy must reflect the impacts of the COVID nineteen pandemic, along with providing the foundations for a green recovery, enabling the whole district to meet its carbon twenty thirty, carbon neutrality target. At the same time, developing a plan which is also shared, ambitious, bold and dynamic. The new green economic development strategy will give insight into the scale of the task ahead in terms of the change of direction needed to, to transition to a sustainable green economy. It will provide a roadmap which is shared by all and which provides the practical steps for how to transform the Winchester district to a much greener, more technologically driven, creative economy, where our existing businesses can grow sustainably. New businesses can be created and thrive, and there are high quality job opportunities for all demographics, demographics across the whole district. To achieve this shared roadmap, the strategy is being built on a collaborative consensus of those who live, work and study here now and in the future. Hence a work stream dedicated solely to this objective with stakeholder engagement forming a golden thread throughout the whole project as outlined in the paper provided. Tonight's meeting forms part of that engagement work. Furthermore, the committee as a group will have an additional opportunity to input as the strategy moves closer to completion in September, as well as members individually throughout the next stages. The insight that the engagement and consensus work is providing is just as important as the data itself. And together is forming the development of the vision, which is underpinning the creation of the final ten year green economic development strategy. So in summary, the policy committee has been asked to review and comment on the work undertaken, findings to date and the emerging themes which will underpin the vision and ultimately the strategy. And so with this in mind, I'd like to hand over to urban foresight and to Graham Thrower, head of infrastructure and investment, and Sam Nair, principal consultant, to spend about fifteen minutes illustrating the emergent vision with you. Many thanks. Over to you, Graham.
Thanks very much, Andrew, and thanks, Sue. Pleasure to be able to speak to the committee tonight. I should say actually that in addition to myself and Sam Nair from urban foresight, I'm joined by our colleague in this piece of work, David Marlowe from Third Life Economics. And there is an additional member as well, Simon Eden, who has been working on this with us, who unfortunately can't be present tonight. What we've done is we've, as you heard, we, we've been consulting extensively with stakeholders from across the whole district, from the business community, both large and small, from land and property, from central Winchester, the city itself. Those entities concerned with rural matters. And we have more engagement that we will, we will do going forward, not least the senior leadership team in the near future. We have also, as you've seen, undertaken a reasonably extensive evidence based analysis. And also done an analysis of infrastructure gaps and other things like that. What we are developing now, what you see before you, what I'll talk about over the next fifteen minutes, is the emerging vision for the green economic development strategy. It's important to say that the vision is really a distillation of the key themes that have emerged from the work undertaken so far. They will shape the strategy, but not least because this is only a fifteen to twenty minute presentation. This is not necessarily exhaustive and there will be a, a lot more detail kind of below the level that I'm presenting to you tonight. So I'd like to ask my colleague, Sam Nair, to share his screen with you and hopefully the technology works. And I'll take you through this presentation. Okay, second slide, Sam. Okay, so we've got three opening slides really, which just, I think, set the scene. The first element is really what do we mean by green in a green economic development strategy? And here I think it's important to move away from perhaps outmoded ideas of green versus growth, that you can't have one, you have to have one or the other. I think there is plenty of evidence to show that actually green sustainable initiatives could contribute extremely positively to the. could contribute extremely positively to the growth of the whole district and that's certainly what we'll be focusing on. I think we're all after sustainable economic growth, so that's about building strong foundations for all the recommendations that we are suggesting. I think we're all looking at how we can reduce carbon emissions from transport, which is one of the main emitters of carbon at the moment in the district, similarly removing or reducing carbon emissions from housing. Still, we will all be using energy going forward and so the decarbonisation of that energy source is also important. Looking at the energy mix across the district, which includes in addition to electricity, things like gas and heating oil, and looking at how we can reduce our dependence on all of those and when it comes to electricity, how can we make that as clean as possible? And in so doing, in doing all of those bullet points, how can we position Winchester district therefore as a preferred location for jobs and skills development around the green agenda? And I think there's some really interesting opportunities that exist within the whole district to do just that, not least with some of the higher education institutions that exist, things like Winchester University, Sparschaw College, some existing programmes that are already out there and also key partners such as the South Downs National Park. And overall, you know, how do we do all of this whilst exercising good custodianship of the environment and biodiversity? Having lived in Winchester for five years, I know what a beautiful part of the world it is. I'm sure most people feel that. People want jobs, they want opportunity, they want skills, they want easy access to services, but we also want to maintain the quality of the environment and the biodiversity within it. Sam, next slide. So I think whenever we're asked to work on strategies and both ourselves and Third Life Economics do quite a lot of this sort of work, there's always the question at the start really, which is around what is the degree of ambition? And when I say ambition, I would try and unpick that a little bit and I think in the context of Winchester district here is, you know, what is the willingness to do things such as challenging consensus thinking, for example? So it may be that certain development sites that have been available for a while, there have been assumptions about how they might be used, but are we willing to perhaps, you know, think again about that? You know, there may have been assumptions about what the centre of Winchester was like in terms of its daytime offer and its nighttime offer. Are we prepared to challenge that? You know, there may have been assumptions about the role of public transport across the district. Are we prepared to challenge that? So I think, yeah, I think an ambitious leadership by the council here ought to be willing to challenge some of that consensus thinking. I think there's also a clear importance of partnership working. We recognise that you do not have all the levers that are needed to make this work. So partnership working is extremely important. The good news is that the stakeholder engagement we've done, which has been extensive, shows a clear appetite for that partnership working, but also shows a clear appetite for clarity and leadership on the part of the council. And we are talking about a 10 year green economic development strategy. So the other thing that's required here is a degree of operational flexibility. The world in five years will be different from the world now and we need to be able to help give you the tools in the green economic development strategy to allow you to be flexible as you go forward and prioritise perhaps different interventions at different times. Next slide, Sam. And then just looking at the wider strategic context, what we've shorthand called the multiple Winchesters. So looking at central Winchester, the historic city, but looking at the market towns, the rural areas widely. You know, there are, there are a number of different elements to the whole Winchester district and what we need to propose is something that can work for all of those Winchesters and not just one part. I think we recognise that it's very important to position Winchester for central government investment opportunities and priorities. It's important that we recognise where the policy levers are and where they aren't and come up with a plan as to how to address those issues that we feel are important and that stakeholders feel are important, but where the policy levers do not reside with you. And that's about influencing and lobbying and presenting a vision, I think. And obviously we need to recognise that this green economic development strategy is not going to be launched into a vacuum. There are many current local and regional plans and strategies with which it needs to align to a degree, perhaps challenge some of those, but we need to be aware of that context and we've been provided with all of those and we've been going through all those to try and understand the kind of path that we need to navigate. Thanks, Sam. So just very quickly, this SWOT analysis is, has come out of the engagement that we've done and some of the evidence that we've gathered. And we're being candid with you here because I think, you know, it's important that we give kind of clear advice. So we do see some really good strengths, clearly strong economic metrics within the whole district. It's very well connected. It has some excellent and distinctive green creative assets, independent businesses, higher education institutions, et cetera. I think interestingly, a number of quite significant development opportunities and some, some strong niche expertise. Weaknesses, there is perhaps a perception amongst stakeholders that there is a resistance to change, that the town is somewhat public sector dominated, that there is a shortage of office space at the higher level and of innovation infrastructure, that anchor institution collaboration is there but not seen as a strength, certainly something that could be improved. And I think pre pandemic, I think we all realised, you know, there are issues around transport capacity and air pollution congestion and some digital infrastructure constraints as well. But there are opportunities here. We've already talked about the stakeholder appetite for leadership on the part of the council. I think there are huge opportunities to improve the anchor institution collaboration and really leverage kind of skills and economic growth out of that. I think the National Park represents a real opportunity, not only around rural vitality and biodiversity, but actually also helping drive some of that kind of green jobs and skills agenda. And we've seen that working with national parks in other parts of the country. And like I said, some interesting development opportunities. Threats? Well, there is a perceived lack of decisive leadership and kind of can do culture. We've had people cite other neighbouring local authorities that are seen to have kind of grasped the nettle a little bit and perhaps positioned themselves well for, for instance, satellite offices from some of the large London businesses. So that's something that we need to have a think about. I think there is an element of kind of poor positioning in terms of context, in terms of what is the real USP for Winchester and also where are the, where are the strategic clusters at scale? And there are some issues around housing supply and affordability, which, which in turn actually have an impact on things such as transport with people living in Winchester, often working out of Winchester in London, Southampton, other places and people working in Winchester during the day often having to travel in in order to, because they can't afford to live close to the city centre. So, you know, as always, these things are always intertwined. So it's not about making a strategic recommendation for one element such as housing without then thinking about what's the knock on impact and things like transport. Next slide, Sam. So one way to present this, and this is not necessarily what the final strategy will look like, but a way to present this is to think about some themes that the green economic development strategy might, might look to address, some strategic priorities. And we've termed these, we came up with four. There are more that we have, we've looked at as well. But one was around a levelled up Winchester, another was a kind of 20 minute community. And no, I didn't say 20 minute city because this is not just about Winchester, this is also about making the market towns really strong functional economies in and of themselves. I think a third one is a resilient Winchester, that's economically and environmentally resilient. And then the last one is kind of a whole district wide push for enterprise and economic growth from that angle. Sam, next slide. So that I don't take up too much time, we've just got one slide, Sam, next slide please. We've just got one slide on each of these and again, these are not mutually exclusive. So even though I'm going to talk about housing and skills here, that doesn't mean that housing and skills wouldn't feature in those other scenarios, but this is just to give you an indication. So what do we mean by, by the, the levelled up Winchester? Well, what we mean is inclusive growth by better linking the knowledge and foundational economies. I think a just transition through meeting the challenges facing different parts of the district and recognising that there are inequalities across the district. And I think it's also around addressing that housing affordability and sustainability issue. Now, on the housing front, I think there are acknowledged strong architecture and design capabilities already within Winchester. You know, could we combine that with, we know what is happening, the innovation within off site and zero carbon construction and that is in house building, it can also be in commercial buildings. We know, for instance, that is a priority item for MHCLG, so this is, this is a central government priority as well. It has the benefit of reducing the energy demand of the houses, making them more efficient, better places to live in. It also means that those kind of housing projects and other construction projects can be rolled out more quickly and at lower cost. And, you know, there are opportunities there. This is still a growth area. There is opportunities for something like the National Centre for Training for Sustainable Construction, which is currently looking for a home. And that links into the skills and foundational economy. That could be one of the kind of new economic areas where Winchester could really put a flag in the ground for building those skills. And as part of a kind of culture of lifelong skills training and outreach, which should also embrace the various green technologies that we might look to see in the district such as technologies for housing retrofit, for, you know, ground source heat pumps, for solar and many others. And these sort of programmes, working with communities and education providers can also help increase the environmental and social stewardship of Winchester's, Winchester city, towns, towns and villages. And I think that also capitalises on the ambition of the education providers. We've spoken to them all and I think there is a strong sense that, you know, they're already doing a fair bit and they would like to be able to do more. And I think by leveraging some of these partnerships more, I think there is scope to increase what's being done. Sam? So the second one is the 20 minute communities and really there we're looking at how do we reduce travel, you know, between different places? How do we provide an improved live work offer within places like the market town centres? And that also obviously starts to address some of the congestion issues. It takes cars off the road. And here really two areas, connected enterprise space, both in those kind of market towns, but also in other areas as well, looking at issues such as digital connectivity, looking at small flexible enterprise space in the market towns and indeed the National Park. No reason why we can't have enterprise centres and innovation centres within the National Park. In terms of local services, it is about this kind of idea of a functional kind of local economy. So this is about people being able to access good jobs, skills development, key local services, all within a reasonably short distance from where they live. And that will have, I think, a huge benefit both in those more urban centres, but particularly in some of the kind of rural and market towns and areas. I think it's about helping build even stronger the independent businesses and local suppliers in town centres. We've seen some of the national multiples starting to leave city centres and town centres. There is an opportunity here to reimagine, to challenge, you know, what city centres should be like, both in the daytime and the nighttime economy. And I think also these, these town centres, vibrant town centres then enhance the visitor office offer in the gateway to the South Downs. So that starts to become a really good kind of virtuous circle in terms of the offer to people coming to the area. Next slide, Sam. Yeah. So resilient Winchester. In one sense, that means resilience to things like, you know, floods and adaptation to rising temperatures. It's about enhancing local biodiversity and it's about looking at where we can boost local renewable energy generation. I think it's about increase, increased green space and green infrastructure. I think it's about supporting local food producers and enhancing the value of those kind of natural capital assets for the district as a whole. It's about helping network businesses and organisations to improve resource efficiency and develop their own kind of sustainable and green initiatives. It's about improving access to green space and it's about, you know, innovative and frankly proven green infrastructure and ecosystem services in any kind of new housing developments and business parks. There is a lot of good practice out there and our strategy document will highlight some of that in kind of case studies. Often the issue is not the technology that can be deployed, the issue is kind of culture that maybe means doing things a little differently from the way they've been done before. And then energy generation, I've already talked about, you know, replacing some things like, you know, heating oil and LPG and things like that. And always, of course, it's, it's energy generation in the right places and we aren't naive. We do understand that one person's right place is another person's wrong place when it comes to solar arrays. But I think there are nevertheless some sites that will, I'm sure, be able to be identified where this can be meaningfully done, also making more use of some of the flat roofs in urban areas and business parks and aggregating all of that together to make a kind of meaningful difference. Thanks, Sam. Last one now is district wide enterprise. So I think this is about rethinking retail space for the future. I think we're all aware of the way our high streets are being challenged like never before and things won't go back to being the same. I think it is about flexible and affordable space for startups and growth. We're seeing a lot of demand for that in many areas of the country in which we work. And I think that demand is there both in city centres, but it's also there in rural communities as well. I think there is a real opportunity here for Winchester to be the UK Centre for Sustainable Tourism. And then, you know, maybe looking at investments such as flagship attractions, you know, whether that's a contemporary arts centre or rural exhibitions or whatever it might be, again, further strengthening the visitor offer. So in this particular scenario, it really is about Winchester's urban centres being and rural centres being open to business and new residents, diversifying business base, developing the talent pool and making the most of this kind of strong independent sector. And you've got the seeds of that already, but that can be developed further. That does require strong broadband infrastructure and services, definitely. It might be looking at some of those council owned regeneration opportunities and looking at live workspace and pop ups and independent businesses. Again, magnifying this kind of sense of dynamism and independent creativity. Looking at big ticket projects that could be going on in the district, using all the control levers that you have at your disposal to make them investment ready for innovative zero carbon exemplar development, because that in turn will create investment into the region and make it all the more logical that some of the skills development centres should be based within the district. I think a district wide sustainable tourism brand, Winchester's ideally placed for that and to better network the rural visitor attractions. And lastly, I think the, that whole taken, taken in together, the rural and the urban and the market towns, you know, provides a real opportunity to establish a very differentiated tourism destination for, for, for the whole district. Next slide, Sam. That's basically all we have for this presentation. We were conscious, we only had sort of about 20 minutes to present, but myself and Sam and David would be happy to take any comments, questions, feedback. And as I said, it remains in development and there's, there's a lot more ideas behind these. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Graham. And Chair, that ends our presentation on the next 10 year green economic development strategy. And as Graham said, we'd be very happy to take questions, observations from the committee.
Thank you very much, Andrew, and particularly to Graham. I think that's a fantastic presentation, and I really hope that more of our council members can see it. A number of us took part in a zero-carbon visioning exercise last night. And I think amazingly, the sort of overlaps and the complementarity of these two exercises is really telling and encouraging that we might be able to really take something forward with this work that's being kicked off here. So I have a hand up from councillor Scott with a first question.
Yeah, a couple of questions upon my gentlemen. Thank you very much. On, I don't know if you've got papers in front of you, but you're in on 24, 2.42, you give reference to a high sort of 18 to 20-year-olds in the city. I can care of that because what I represent has a high level of student population and HMOs. And sometimes it's very difficult to sort of get buy-in to people who are what we call transient residents, who are here for eight months and obviously don't always settle after their three years. So it'd be interesting to know your thoughts about that. And another, and there's a tell of that sort of description of the big high-level student population in the city. Perhaps do we also think we should go down to the sixth former secondary school, which are the King's Government Act, and maybe even the primary schools to try and get some of these messages out through education platforms? Because they are our future and buy-in to the children and young people in the future of Winchester, not just settle into the high levels of students, but I'm not doing it with this credit, because obviously having a university is a credit to our town. The other thing I would say is about levelling up. I remember being in planning committee a number of years ago when solar panels were the flame of the month by lots of people who were coming in to promote their planning applications. And it always seemed that those who could, you know, afford solar panels, got solar panels. And I really did like, I mean, very impressed on your levelling up part of Winchester to make those who are can't afford it and probably are in city councils and houses providing tendencies that got a risk to provide the properties as well, would need to be looked at as well, so they don't get left behind on the way we move forward with the screen agenda for Winchester. And the last thing I'll just allude to is you gave a little bit of reference to 2.43 about Winchester has a relatively healthy resident population with only a small pocket of deprivation. I think when you do get pockets of deprivation, I think the government stats look at the North of Stow, or look at Wille, look at Wickham in a sort of, in those sort of deprivation areas, where the numbers come down on health, income improvement and education. We need to actually make sure that we actually, again, it's due when we move forward on this green agenda, that people who are passed in the deprivation areas, that they're not left behind as well. So how can we make sure that we actually take them forward with the approach? Otherwise, we've got this sort of abhorrent Winchester population again. Does that make sense?
Thank you, councillor Scott. Graham, what, Andrew, I don't know how you'd like to do this, I'll hand it over to you.
If I if I kick off, thank you very much, councillor Scott, for your questions. And I'm sure Graham will want to contribute to the responses. So, yeah, as you as you highlight, councillor Scott, our transient resident population in the younger age demographics, and that is something that we are very aware of. And in our work with Graham and his team, we've been very clear to ensure that we have stakeholder groups that wrap up that particular group and going down into the education sector through universities and further education. We haven't gone further at the moment into sort of comprehensive education, but that's something we may well consider, but looking at other access into youth groups as well to get their input. We do fare relatively well as a city in retaining our university population, but not as much as we would like to. So again, that is another reason why that is particularly key within this particular programme. I pick up your comments also around levelling up and the solar panels, et cetera, and also the areas of deprivation, and completely agree with you that, you know, we must ensure that, you know, you've heard me say throughout and Graham as well, that all of this work covers the whole district in terms of job opportunities and in terms of, you know, the wider green agenda for all areas across the whole district. And we'll wrap up those areas of deprivation as well and outcomes from this particular strategy. We arrange a range of different work streams that could well focus on very much on those sorts of agendas. But Graham, is there other?
Yeah, I may just say a few things. I think, you know, the point on levelling up and housing and access is really, really important. And we've we've just completed a piece of work for the Scottish Government on social housing and the opportunities for what they call a just transition to a greater use of off-site construction and zero-carbon construction. And the reason that's important is because it does, some of these new methods use innovative materials and processes to create homes that are much more energy efficient and can really help those people who would otherwise perhaps in existing homes be suffering from fuel poverty. So I think there's a real opportunity there. And like I say, I think it is nationally a priority area for government, so expect more investment in that space. I think when you talk about young people, whether it's young people who are at university in Winchester and the district, or whether it's people who may live in the district but study elsewhere and are looking to come back here after they complete their studies. I think that often there are similar things that people want. We've done these exercises elsewhere, and I think the opportunity for further skills development and the opportunity for good employment are absolutely key, coupled with a pleasant environment in which to live and, you know, quality of life. So clearly, kind of quality of life and pleasant environment to live in is something that Winchester can really deliver. The question is, is there enough breadth and depth to the skills development market and the jobs market? And that's something where what we're looking to do is try and build on the many strengths that already exist in Winchester in various sectors. But then also look to see how can we better position Winchester and its institutions, key institutional partners such as the higher education institutions, to help create a whole new level of skills and opportunities in what we see as the growth markets that would be aligned to a district that is taking measures around green strategy, sustainability, resilience, et cetera, et cetera, as I discussed. We have spoken with a number of the educational institutions. And we have plans for a digital survey for young people. It's been a bit difficult to pull together round tables because at the time of year we're doing it, it's been exam season. And that can be problematic for students to juggle those kind of commitments along with engaging in a round table with ourselves. But we are continuing to, like I said, that is an ongoing thread. But that's what I'd say at this point on it. David, Sam, anything to add?
Just a couple of things from me, Graham, if that's okay. I mean, firstly, councillor Scott, I think you're really right about getting buy-in from residents who are learning in the city. And one of the points we made was around whether the anchor institution collaboration was at the really highest level of coherence and cohesion and consistency. And, you know, the reality is that there are many universities that are actually highly vivid in the way that they relate to their communities. And there are discussions to be had with both Winchester and the art school or the School of Art about how things like beyond beyond sort of the normal student corporate social responsibility and stuff, but also how their curriculum could help with tackling local issues and local challenges, the role of students in the the sort of, you know, internships and project work and so on. On levelling up, very briefly, I mean, self-evidently, external governmental institutions will not see Winchester as a priority for levelling up. You won't be seen as a national priority, arguably even in the South East. You know, Winchester will not be seen as one of the priority geographies for levelling up. And so one of the things I think is important out of the Green Economic Development Strategy and indeed other work you're doing, is that you determine what your approach to levelling up itself is locally, you know, which are the target communities or groups, and what are their needs in terms of of making achieving their full potential in Winchester going forward? And whether it is, you know, you as a landlord helping with energy efficiency, or whether it is you as an influencer looking at schools and, you know, child issues, or whether it is, you know, aging, you know, healthy aging, you know, there are a range of things that at least the Green Economic Development Strategy can help with your own definition of what levelling up should mean in a Winchester context.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to perhaps move us on to the 20-minute communities point and ask, and it came out last night, a really big desire to see us prioritise and tackle transportation questions and the impact of that. You see, it's not an area that Winchester itself has a lot of discretion on, but I wonder if we're thinking about that, is there any particular area that you think Winchester could prioritise its activities to get some traction on this whilst perhaps waiting for its sort of partner organisations and policy to create the framework for it to move forward?
David, do you want to take that one first?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's actually an immense amount. You can do locally, and, you know, part of it is clearly around the whole issue of homeworking and commuterism. And actually, you know, if you look, I mean, Winchester is, I think, if not the most, the highest commuter densities in the South East, it certainly is one of the top three in terms of both inward and outward commuting. And if particularly in certain types of jobs, there will be a reversion to, or sorry, there will be a continuation of much higher levels of homeworking or indeed local serviced working than hitherto, then then clearly the demands on transport will be lower, and there will be opportunities for for you to create, whether it's through planning or through development, some of the key building blocks for 20-minute cities. And we did speak about, you know, issues around serviced shared office, serviced office accommodation, live-work space. So, I mean, that's just one example. But, you know, there are, you've done some great works yourselves on one Winchester, which again can provide some foundations for the 20-minute town. I think there needs to be some further thought for the rural areas, but certainly if you think about commuterism and changing patterns post-pandemic, if you think about creating local employment opportunities, if you think about new patterns of new work patterns and the commercial office space required to deliver them, there probably will be quite a lot of opportunities for the city council to intervene directly and to also influence other major players.
Yeah, and I'll just add one thing really around the policy levers. I mean, we recognise that whenever we work on strategies, whether they're economic development strategies, green economic development strategies, we also do net-zero carbon strategies for various entities, that, you know, these things are often wrestling with the fact that infrastructure is no great respecter of geography necessarily, and that if you're trying to address things such as public transport infrastructure, it might be roads, it might even be to do with water catchment, all sorts of things, that these things can straddle administrative boundaries. And also, you don't have the delegated responsibility for all of the interventions that you might wish to make. But in those scenarios, what is really key is that the people that do have the policy levers are very clear about what Winchester stands for, what your strategy is, so that your ask, whether that's of central government or of county or Highways England or whoever it might be, that your ask is very clear and backed up by evidence. And then I think that makes it much more likely that you will be able to successfully influence and lobby for the changes that you wish to see. And so there is that onus, I think, on Winchester City Council to to really ensure that the evidence is produced and the strategy is clear. And that also you do take all steps that you can to ensure that the work and interventions done by others will be complemented by the work that you are doing yourselves, so that everyone is seen to be pointing in the same direction.
And can I just add to further Graham's point of a tangible example? We know, for example, that Hampshire County Council are working on their sort of bus strategy later in the year to respond to this for central government requirements. So there's a great example of how Winchester City Council can sort of proactively work with the county to get Winchester's needs and asks into that strategy, rather than just waiting to see what happens for the further deadline.
Thank you. So I've got three lined up. I've got councillor Lovey, councillor Isaac, and then councillor Rangiff. Councillor Lovey, perhaps we could keep some pace going?
Yep, thank you, thank you, Chair. That's useful. It's sort of three questions, but I'll crack through and that's very angry. Can everyone hear okay? Yeah, sorry, it's me that gets the air given. First of all, thank you for a very good presentation. One of the points that jumps out is that, and I'm putting words in your mouth, but I'd like you to comment on this, is that almost our biggest enemy here is ourselves. Because what you were talking about is the need for clear ambition, clear leadership, clear part of the working. But some of the weaknesses and threats you identify are a resistance to change, poor, well, not strong, sorry, anchor institution collaboration, and a perceived lack of decisive leadership, and a can-do culture. Are we, in some ways, the real problem to the strategy succeeding firstly? Secondly, you mentioned, you referenced specifically council-led city regeneration schemes and the need to bring those forward, referring particularly to a shortage of grainy office and innovation infrastructure, sorry, doing long words in late evening. Can you give us examples of what sort of schemes you had in mind there? Thirdly, and I was lucky enough to hear one of your earlier presentations, and thank you. There were a number of changes between them. I noticed that we are no longer entrepreneurial, but we're now district-wide enterprise as the fourth limb. And there was a reference, which councillor Dever will share my concern with, to Whitley being a future city's exemplar, which I wanted to know what that meant. It seems to have disappeared. It seems to have disappeared. What's the strange fate of that? And can we as local representatives of Whiteley please know more about it? Thank you.
Okay, thanks for those comments. Firstly, like I said, this is a kind of a living document. It changes as we go along and as we think. I think to take your last point first, there is a feeling that there is the potential for more housing development around the Whiteley area. And that, you know, there are opportunities to, I realise at the moment that it's not regarded as an exemplar. But I think there are opportunities around improving public transportation links and looking at the methods of construction used for any further developments to try and work in a more functional kind of community there than perhaps some of the stakeholders we have spoken to have suggested is there at the moment. But that is something that we are kind of looking at in a little more depth. And so we've taken that out for now. And I think that actually that probably plays to a more general point, which is that we probably are not looking to provide an extremely prescriptive, micro level detail of these are the projects you must do, these are the projects you mustn't do. Because I think the Green Economic Development Strategy needs to establish a kind of direction of travel, but not necessarily specify all of the points that you need to stop off en route. That would be one thing I would say. In terms of offices and schemes, so I mean, again, we have been made aware of things such as the Riverside Regeneration Project, the Station Approach Project. We know that there are plans underway, for instance, for Sir John Moore's barracks, et cetera, et cetera. And what we're saying is that where there are significant sites where the council has either control or strong influence, that these represent opportunities. They represent opportunities that don't necessarily come along too often. They represent opportunities where you can really make a strong statement that will show to the people of Winchester, but also show to entities that may be looking to invest in Winchester or partner with Winchester, just what your new Green Economic Development Strategy really means. So they are important signposts, I think. And that then takes me to your first point, the whole one around ambition, leadership, partnership working. I think the role of us as external consultants is to do all we can to immerse ourselves in the context of Winchester and to try and understand the dynamics, both in the district and beyond. And as you'll know, we have, as part of our team, Simon Eden, who was chief executive of the council for some years and still lives in the area. And indeed David Marlowe, who has very strong experience of the whole Hampshire and related economy, as well as myself having lived in the city for five years. But what we should also be doing, and I think what we are trying to do through those comments, is to say, when we look at what stakeholders have told us about Winchester and Winchester council and partnership working and innovation assets and et cetera, et cetera, how does that compare to other areas that we feel are maybe demonstrating stronger growth and attracting more investment, both public and private investment? And what would be driving their success? And what might be factors that could be inhibiting growth across Winchester? And therefore what things could be addressed? So it's no more nor less than that. It's not saying that things are being done badly or that people are neglecting to do anything. I think it's just saying that are there options or possibilities to to do more than is currently being done? And we believe there are.
Thank you, Graham. I'm going to move us on then, but I think that was, those points were well made. Councillor Isaac.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for a really interesting presentation. Obviously, I come from a market town, one of the more rural areas of your report. It was interesting, from the documentation that I've obviously seen and your presentation, there was more explanation inclusivity of the district on some common issues and agendas. But the paperwork is still saying Winchester. Obviously, perception is people's reality. I'm just wondering if it would be really helpful for engagement, particularly in the rural areas, if where there is commonality, we can actually say Winchester District and actually make it more specific to Winchester if it relates just to Winchester. Because the report basically looks through it all as Winchester, Winchester, Winchester. It's like actually, some of these points are relevant to the district. And you know, the 20 minutes of work, you know, where people will work from home in our Oxford and Titchfield Valley area, they do commute to Winchester, it's in 20 minutes. We've still got the issues of the bus and transport and carbon emissions. And we've got now one of the named Hampshire County Council carbon production projects with Sun Lane Development within our town. We now know, we've been working on broadband so that people can work from home more and actually getting that improved. It would be nice to know if we could perhaps include within this how this group or your project could link in with Taylor Wimpey? Because there is a commercial site for development there that's part of the plan. There is an infrastructure for faster broadband providing to that site. It's an opportunity for linking to provide for cross purposes within the project to make it more part of your project. And linking all the things that relate to employment, housing, there's a 40% affordability on 350 houses. We're already engaging with them on the environmental side of things as well. But that particular site and project has at least six or seven of your issues within it. But actually, it's just covered under Winchester in the wording. So could I ask, you know, the team, everybody, to perhaps look at that and how this could perhaps be encouraged within this project to be included for consideration and assistance in some of your areas? Thank you.
I don't know whether that's one for Andrew or Lyndon.
Very happy to initially take that and thank you very much for that, Isaac's good comment. Absolutely take that on board. Completely agree with everything you said in terms of the district-wide context and the specific requirements around market towns, rural areas and the city. I think you'd have heard me say in my opening words that this is very much a district-wide strategy that needs to encompass all of our constituent areas and the differences within them. And take on board that perhaps we're not completely reflecting that in all of the language at the moment in these early draft papers that you're seeing. But would certainly reassure you that that would most definitely be the case going forward when we move towards more of the final sets of documentation. And indeed, all of the engagement and stakeholder work that we're doing is ensuring that we are covering the whole of the district and opportunities arising within that. Graham, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean, I think you said that, hopefully councillor Isaac would have seen in the presentation tonight and make considerable reference to district. As Andrew said, that has been the focus right from the start. Apologies if language in earlier documents doesn't fully reflect that, but the documents going forward certainly will.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, I just wanted to pick up on councillor Isaac's reference to the developer of the Sun Lane project. And could you say something about the amount of engagement with our developers? And we have quite a range of developers who do a lot of the work in this area. Have they been part of your stakeholder consultation so far? Because I think getting that message to them about, or finding from them what the barriers to moving forward. And when we see applications coming to planning committee, or we ask them about their approach to sustainability, sometimes it's quite disappointing that they're really just working to the current building standards. They're not pushing ahead on that. How can we get them on board?
Graham, I don't know if you want to add to this, but certainly in terms of, again, the stakeholder groups, we have, the team have got property developers engaged and construction organisations engaged in that process. There may well be more that we can be doing in that area, Graham.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say is that at any given time in any area in which we work, there will be many projects and initiatives ongoing. So when we're doing strategy type work, what we would normally do is rather than getting involved in individual projects, we would look to try and make recommendations through the strategy as to how the council can better drive the outcomes that you wish from the various projects that you're overseeing and granting approval to. And so that normally takes the form of advice on how you can reflect the Green Economic Development Strategy in things like your procurement processes, in things like your application of the planning frameworks, and in things like assurance processes around capital investment. So we spend a lot of time with clients, helping embed the strategies in those kind of key process levers that you have as a body. And then that can help you get the outcomes that you're looking for, whether that's from a Taylor Wimpey development today or another development three or five years hence.
Thank you, Graham. And I'm sure we'll be picking that up with you again. And councillor Radcliffe has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair, it's a very quick one. And actually, the last comments in response to that question touched on really what I wanted to ask, which is the process question. How, what is the follow-up to this strategy that we're envisaging? How do we make sure that what's in here is embedded into the work that's going on across the full range of activities that the council undertakes? Clearly, only some of these recommendations are within the purview of the city council. Only some of them are things that we can direct the action. Others are things that we can promote and lobby for and push and try and influence. But at least insofar as the things that are within our power of action. How can we make sure that these don't fall between the cracks? Otherwise, really just to thank the authors and to say, as a new councillor and as a new member of the committee, we could not have had a better briefing document or introduction to the landscape that we now have to navigate and for throwing down some important challenges for us and for the council.
Thank you. Graham, over to you.
Well, I think the the point about the sort of planning, procurement, assurance, those elements will form part of the actual strategy document. And additionally, the methodology that we followed in the vision, where we talk about these thematic strategic priorities. The way we will tend to present those when it comes to the final strategy is almost a kind of elements of your strategy that you can emphasise more or less over time, depending on where you feel the needs are of Winchester and its citizens at any given time. And so what we've done in other circumstances is establish the kind of prioritisation matrix, which you can then apply when considering different interventions, different investments, different priorities as your priorities change over the 10-year period. So it actually should give you a fairly active tool that you can use yourselves to ensure that your processes are kind of fit for purpose to deliver the outcomes you want over the whole life of the strategy.
If I could just add, Graham, I mean, I do think, you know, we are going to have to say something in the strategy after we've spoken to the senior leadership team about implementation. And you're absolutely right, councillor Radcliffe, that there needs to be a visible whole council approach to green economic development. And also, again, as we've alluded to really throughout this evening, a refresh and a sort of post-pandemic reshaping of your collaboration arrangements with particularly key players. So that there is a Team Winchester, Team Winchester District that really is committed to driving the key parts of the strategy forward. So we will certainly say something about deliverability and mobilising the capacity and capability to actually progress the key items that you end up agreeing.
Thank you both. I think that was very helpful. I don't think I've got any further questions. Councillor Todd, do you want to comment at all at this stage?
If I may briefly, Chair. I mean, first of all, thank you to everybody for a set of really thought-provoking comments. This is very much at this stage where we're trying to get ideas as to how to improve things. I thought councillor Radcliffe's point at the end about implementation was particularly well made. And indeed, it was something I've talked about with the partners on that issue earlier today. Saying it's not just enough to say we need good partnership, but actually asking for good practice examples that we can embed, that we can learn from and implement. So that we're not just looking at, obviously, an action plan, obviously, a toolkit for prioritisation of actions. But also particularly some of the softer but incredibly important elements as to how we can create leadership for and to achieve the partnership models that's being talked about. Really make sure we have something quite specific on that. And similarly, as is often the case in local government, having clear sight on funding and a proper funding strategy that looks at not only our internal sources of funding, but does a kind of horizon survey to say what opportunities are coming up and how can we use those to drive the agenda that we've adopted? So it is very much the intention that, you know, this will be a strategy that we embed, that we act on, and that we're thinking about how we bring it to life. You know, from the second one before it's agreed, but certainly as part of agreeing the entire proposal and process.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Time is moving on, but I'm happy to take a brief debate comments if anybody wants to. Otherwise, and I'm not seeing hands going up here, can I just thank Graham, David and Sam for their time this evening? I think as we said in our conversation last week, really important to bring this to the committee at this stage. I really think it's exciting to hear how your thoughts are developing on this. And I find it a very unifying proposal that's coming forward. I think we're beginning to see the framework emerging for a sort of roadmap. The councillors, councillor Todd said, this is about a 10-year plan and prioritisation is going to be quite critical to us, how we get those ducks in the right order as we go forward. And there are lots of, it is a complex issue to deal with. But I think we're, from what I can gather, really pleased with what we've heard so far and we look forward to engaging with you again the next meeting and as this moves forward. So I think we'll call that, finish that item and move on. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just moving on to item 11. Which stays on business side. So just moving on to item 11, which stays on business side, the district's high streets priority plan for 2122. Sue, you kicking this one off?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I am. And given this was a change of pace, from the future to the present, I think with this plan. I'm going to show my screen. Hopefully, this is going to work from within the room. If not, we know that we circulated, hopefully, paper copies for you all there. And I can't seem to do the share. Never mind. I will use my presentation. If you can go to the paper format, if that's okay with everybody. Have you got your copies? Thank you. For some reason, my teams won't share. So thank you for allowing me to come and discuss the Winchester district's high street priority plan with you. And this is, as I say, a tactical plan that we wanted to produce, which sets out how we support our businesses to reopen, to innovate, and also to enable people to enjoy our areas and high streets as social and cultural spaces again. This is very much about setting out what we need to do and what we can do, but also giving us an opportunity to set our direction of travel and the change that we want to see, identifying those opportunities and taking them. And we have got set out some priorities and levers to frame that action. And I think this is also important that we take some of this work and we can build it into a longer term future vision for our high streets. And interestingly, in the presentation we just had, we heard comments about, you know, what are the challenges for our high streets? How will people want to use them? What is the change in retail nature? And so I think this will help build in and align with that economic strategy. And I think it's important to see that these aren't separate but supportive and complementary pieces of work. And we have much to build from. I think over the past 12 months or more now, as extensions to reopening has continued, we have been responding and reacting and giving help and support and working with our businesses and our partners in our high streets to ensure they are able to operate even within the COVID restrictions. And we've learnt much from that. And there is much out there in the sort of best practice world from organisations like the Future High Streets Force, Task Force, but also our own work. We've gathered a lot of information from recent consultations and our own local plan work. And as I say, the work we've been undertaking with our partners to deliver action on the ground. So we have much to build from, but I think it's really taking a step from that back foot response and react to actually being able to present to our communities and stakeholders a more proactive picture of where we want to work in the future for our high streets. So we have got some important things that we can capitalise on. We have run campaigns like Shop Local, Love Local. And we want to understand this changing opportunity of home workers and how they're using their high streets more. And we have festivals and street markets across our district, but they have been severely impacted and are still possibly suffering from restriction requirements. And it's understanding how we can support them to come back. And we have, where we've been able to, create some outside space. And it feels like there is an appetite amongst the public to have this outdoor, al fresco style of entertainment and food and drink and so on. So it's about how can we build on some of those opportunities that we have. We do have some vacant shops and how can we reinvigorate some of the activity in there, be creative? It might not necessarily go back as retail pop-up. It could be a community pop-up or an art pop-up. So I think it's picking up on some of the comments earlier in the other presentation around challenging what might have been a conventional approach. Already touched on, we do have some really excellent specialist retailers and independent service providers, and we want to promote them and build on their expertise and their opportunities. And we will continue to support our businesses with new ways of working. I've highlighted a few of our foundations and building blocks there, but have we missed any? I would ask the committee to think about whether there are important attractors that we could be maximising opportunity for more. We set out some objectives in the plan to frame, as I say, the actions that we want to undertake, building on the strengths that we already have and building the confidence, connecting our residents with their local centres, thinking about, again, how we create a sense of a whole town or whole high street experience with our festivals, connecting better the businesses and the festival events taking place, and thinking about social spaces more within our high streets and district and urban centres, and making more of a social aspect and a reason for people to meet and come together. And we want to celebrate our successes and what we already are achieving and what we plan to achieve. And clearly, we need to make sure that our businesses are supported and are resilient and can capitalise on change, be growth, and use new opportunities that are being presented. As just touched on about implementation, clearly, we are not able to deliver this on our own, and we would choose to. But we do recognise that we have a leadership role with some aspects, and there are things that we can control. And we need to make sure that we are using those channels as effectively, streamlining them, making them easy, accessible, and not creating extra burden. We want to enable others to act. We do this through funding and through planning, et cetera. Influence hugely important in sharing our agenda with other partners and seeking common goals. And where others are acting, that we can support them, so that if we have compliment, if they are doing something, we can compliment them and support them in their efforts and their endeavours. And I ask again of the committee, are there any important dimensions and levers perhaps we've missed out that will enable us to implement this high street priority plan more effectively and to the benefit of our residents and businesses and visitors? The success of this plan, and it is a challenging plan to achieve what we set out in the document within a year, but as I say, this is a collaborative effort and we will call on others to support us. And particularly, I highlight in the report that we were successful in securing welcome-back funding. And we've been working with representatives from the market towns about how that could be deployed on initiatives and also with our Winchester bid. So there are ways that we can help implement some of the actions within that with some of that funding. But clearly, it is an ambitious plan that we feel we need to act. We feel we want to give a clear direction, and it's important that we articulate that to all our partners, again, recreating some of the points that were made about the green economic development strategy. But ultimately, the success of the plan will need to be judged, and our endeavours and our investments will need to count. And we want to ensure that we bring back footfall and vacancy rates to where they were before, well, before COVID. Sorry, my presentations are there. And increase the spend and the dwell time that people are in our high streets. I think people are commenting on the fact that there might be reduced employees here because people aren't returning to their offices. So how can we increase and encourage people to stay here longer when they do visit, be they residents or people now working from home? And we need a compelling reason for people to come today. It's been commented that we have a fantastic set of assets, but they're always here. So you could come at any time. If you were thinking about where shall I go and visit, you could choose to come Wednesday or in a month's time. So what activity, what event, what energy can we bring to the high street that makes people think, oh, I need to go in there today because I'll miss it otherwise, and find reasons for people to return as well. So there will be KPIs that we monitor, footfall, vacancy rates, businesses opening, closing, et cetera. And that will be part of the work of the plan going forward. But I wanted to present to the committee our thoughts on the plan, which we have shared with various partners across the district to get their insight and views, but to have your feedback on those aspects of the objectives, the assets and the attractors, and whether we're missing anything that we can utilise more effectively for delivery for the high street plan. So thank you. Shorter presentation, appreciate the time. But thank you, Chair. That concludes my own remarks. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Sue. And can I just say that I brought my own mystery shoppers in from outside a few weeks ago, and they were just effusive about their experience in Winchester. They just really enjoyed it, you know, wished they'd been back here before. I'm going to kick off the questions with councillor Radcliffe because I know he's under a bit of time pressure here. So would you like to get started?
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you for the presentation. I'll be very quick, very supportive, very encouraged by what you've set out and the creativity that you're bringing to the task. It's great to see the high street buzzing again. It was beginning to look quite sad just a month or two ago, and a lot of the empty shops are now filling in, which is great. But a lot of the initiatives, being small, go very much in the right direction. I have one very specific question or comment which concerns a great big hole in the high street, very close to where we're sitting tonight, and that is Debenhams. And if I may, just ask a specific question about that, because at least from afar, it seems as if the city council's attitude towards Debenhams is to kind of wait and see and hope that the landlord, who I understand is Surrey County Council, finds somebody to take on the ground floor and fill in that big hole. But there is enormous community interest. I represent St Michael Ward, and that site is right in the middle of my ward. But there is huge interest across the district, I think, in what happens to Debenhams. And it is, it has left a big hole at the lower end of the high street. Could, my question is, could the city council be more proactive? You know, there's a lot of support that I picked up talking to people for the idea of an indoor food market, for example. But it's the kind of thing that's not just going to happen by itself. It could be terrific for the city. We could provide, we could tick many of the boxes in both our green economic development plan and in the tactical plan that you've set out tonight, providing flexible, affordable space for local independent businesses, especially whether it's farmers or food producers. And we have some fantastic Hampshire food producers, you know, from cheesemakers to honey makers to, you know, all sorts of local businesses that could find a trading platform there. Could the council not broker a discussion amongst the stakeholders? Talk to bid, talk to Hampshire farmers' market, talk to some of the independent businesses, broker a proposal page to Surrey County Council, perhaps offer to sweeten it, to pay for, I don't know, the fit-out costs for the premises. It could be a great boon for the local economy. I think it could, it could bring visitors, it would be an asset for the city. We surely have some interest in this. I realise it would exceed the budget that you've set out for the smaller measures that you have planned for the next year. But this could be a terrific investment for the city to make, I think. And it would really revive the lower end of town and also provide some flexible space for festivals and other functions as well. So that was really my question. I'm a novice here, so I'm still kind of groping the extent to which the city council has enough room for manoeuvre to make these kind of initiatives. But if we could be more proactive about this, I think it could be something we could explore.
Thank you, councillor. And I can take a couple of points on that. We, as an economic development team, are liaising closely with our estates team, are leading the conversations with Surrey County Council. And I have stressed and made clear that we do not want to have a vacant space for long periods of time, and that when we know what might be happening with any future tenant, what timeframe we might have available to utilise that space, even if it is in a short-term pop-up sort of capacity. And I haven't got the timelines yet as to where those conversations with Surrey County Council has got, but I am keeping a close eye on it and checking out what might be possible. And we haven't developed a proposition about what could go in there. However, as part of this work, you would have seen, and I mentioned about markets generally, and under the welcome-back fund, markets is something that we definitely want to do more research and understand firstly, the impact of COVID, how markets might change, what markets might be in the future. So that we could include the types of stalls and enterprise, it could include the locations, et cetera. So I think that's going to be a key piece of work that could include those, sort of developing up a proposition for how we support markets and traders. And I think we have, as a team, had a conversation with one agent that set up these sorts of schemes, particularly about the enterprise side of things that you spoke of, where you have people who just need to come to market to test a product for a month or so. And so we have had conversations about models around this, but we haven't actually drawn it together yet. And so I think some of that is work in progress. But the markets particularly is an area that we will focus on and look to see what provision we have going forward on that.
Okay, councillor.
Yeah, I think you touched on two areas where we want to be. We do want to push, be visionary and be innovative as far as we're able. I mean, certainly, we have no interest in Debenhams staying empty in the short or the long term, and are very keen to keep that area of the town active. There are, as you say, options, some of which may not be compatible, such as putting in events into that space, using it as a cultural space, using it as a food space. So that's, those are all things that would need to be looked at. I think the question of markets is a really important one, and actually deserves to be looked at on its own account. Food, both the street food market that effectively was invented during COVID lockdown as a new entity, the farmers' market, our other markets. We are intending to have a review, looking at how we retender those, what the next generation of those markets looks like. And it struck us in conversation when we were thinking about these issues, that it would be quite useful if there was a task and finish group of councillors from this committee or more widely, looking at what should happen to Winchester's markets, including the food markets. And within scope, it could look at, is there enough demand? Is there enough potential revenue and enough potential suppliers to fill a space as large as Debenhams? Or, you know, is it something that fits in the high street and grows organically as it has been at the moment? But that would certainly be something which I think when we talked about it, we thought would be helpful, to get a sort of, shall we say, semi-outside view of where fellow councillors see our markets potentially being able to go. And also perhaps getting insight on what it takes, for example, to keep a space like Debenhams going six days a week. Or maybe people even like the high street environment, you know, maybe the outdoor, such as White Cross Street in London and other such places. Potentially, one of the ideas we were talking about is if we get this right, it becomes a way of activating the city during the day, people working from home if they know we've got a really great lunch break offer and are brought into town to use the town. You know, I think our market strategy is something that needs to look at that as well. So I think this is really important area. It's obviously entirely a matter for the committee. But potentially, I think, looking at our markets and sort of setting some ambitions and direction as to what councillors think we should be aiming at, at the same time as we're pursuing conversations to see what our options might be for Debenhams. And then being able to have a discussion as to whether those two are compatible with each other, I think could be quite a powerful basis for discussion.
Thank you, councillor Todd. I think with some experience of task and finish groups, we need to put, we have a proposal pro forma that perhaps we need to go away and have a look at and make sure we've got a spec. I probably also need to discuss this with the other scrutiny chairs because I think if we, that would be the route to take forward. Welcome any thoughts from my members of this team, but that's how I would proceed with it, assuming that there's general support for the idea among our membership at the moment. Councillor Luton, I'll come back to questions. I'll just pick up on this proposal and then we'll come back to questions.
I think we need to be, thank you, Chair. I think before we head off down another task and finish group, we do have two already busy ones. The other thing is we do with all these things, it takes up a large amount of officer's time. I know that Sue's team are incredibly busy. Is this something that we really need to be doing? Or should we actually be better using officer's time, getting out, actually doing? Because at this point in the cycle, another talking shop may not be the best way forward. But that's just my own thoughts.
Sue, did you have any comments?
The work around markets is something that we will be looking to commence shortly. It's part of the Covid response, wanting to talk to our market providers about the impacts they're facing and their future and, you know, engaging with them as much as us setting a direction. So I think it's important that we have a conversation with them as well. So that is work as part of this High Street recovery. They play an important role and so we will be commencing this work. So I think the opportunity for the member involvement in those discussions and thoughts would have been welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments on this particular proposal on this point?
Perhaps it's one for maybe the Town Forum Chair because the Town Forum has an informal High Street Committee and it's obviously made up of City Councilors. So maybe rather than sort of having to put pressure on you to go to your scrutiny chairs, perhaps we could actually sort of recommend that the Town Forum, when they kick off their year, specifically with the informal High Street thing, put the market situation. I don't, probably sometimes you come to the Town Forum as well too, so there's lots of crossovers. And of course you've got Cabinet members in the Town Forum as well, so, you know, we're part of the same family, aren't we really?
I agree. I had been thinking we certainly should run it past the Town Forum. So I think what I suggest is we will pick that up. I'm sure there will be some interest in that. We're probably going to work with councillor Todd and yourself Sue on a proposal and we'll take it forward. Councillor Todd?
Yeah, I suppose the point for us is that the offer and the desire to engage with councillors in terms of how we think about the future of markets is there and we're happy to do it on, shall we say, a spectrum of formality, whether it's a formal scrutiny group of this group, whether it's the informal group from Town Forum that looks at the High Street, or frankly, whether it's conversations that we have with Ward members and other interested parties, just to help us shape our thinking, we're happy to do that. And as said, we will make sure that we are mindful of what the opportunity may be with Debenhams, or rather how that fits with our desire as far as Debenhams, which is to make sure that one thing that doesn't happen is it stays empty and as a sort of becomes in time a blight on the High Street as a sort of recognised empty space, because we believe it's important we can do much better than that.
Thank you. I think we've covered that, so we'll move on. Councillor Fenton, you had a question?
Thank you Chair. I have a question in regards to how we are actually looking at promoting local business, the High Street and everything, because I know for a fact that in the borough, we are a very wide district covering all manner of different types of businesses and areas. And for instance, in the Ward of Wiley where I am, having spoken to people attending White Shopping Village, there are people attending from Swindon, Bristol, Bournemouth, Kent, somewhere from London and far and wide. Friends in other parts of the country said they've seen TV adverts for Wiley, which, quite surprisingly, considering Wiley has shops, which are no different to many High Streets, yeah, every weekend the car park is absolutely round, much the annoyance of local residents who find they can't get out of Wiley afterwards. But I was wondering whether the advertising we were thinking of doing is purely within the district or whether we are looking to go further afield and being very ambitious, talking to areas such as East East Hampton, Bournemouth, Portsmouth, Bayings, Stoke, further afield, and how that's actually going to sort of manifest itself? Because I'm a great believer that having worked through Covid with my own business, sorry if I'm waffling a little bit, but I've had to become something of a marketing expert just to survive and pay the bills. And I quickly found out that advertising in media, printed or otherwise, was relatively low value, very low return. However, the moment I started throwing Google considerable sums of money, the website traffic increased hundreds of倍 overnight. I appreciate that it's how do you market such a diverse district with obviously what is likely to be a fair and reasonable budget?
Thank you councillor and I see my colleague Andrew has popped up, so I might refer some of this to him as Service Lead for Economy and Tourism. However, I can respond on some elements about the marketing. We have set out a detailed campaigns and promotions plan. Currently, we have that within the Covid restrictions and the balance between attracting people to the High Street, but ensuring that we still maintain social distancing, people feel confident, safe and will want to return because of the experience they've had when we've been here. So we have been slowly increasing our marketing reach and campaigns reach with that work. So we started local, very much in that early stage of response. It was about making sure our residents were connected to the services where they weren't able to travel. We have then, as easings, easing of restrictions have taken place, each milestone extended that reach. So I think we're at a 45 minute drive at the moment and we will increase that further. We're starting to touch on international, not international, national and group travel as well to attract people. So it's a very thorough campaign around that reach of audiences and we do promote many different aspects of the district, from its rural outside spaces for wellness to its visitor attractions and food and drink and independent retail. So we pick on many different messages and aspects from within that diverse district, as you say. And we also do a lot on social media and we do actually have paid Google Ads as well and I know that they have been very effective. But Andrew, I see you've popped up on the screen, as the resident expert, if there's anything you want to add to that, thank you.
Thank you very much Susan. I'll be very brief just to reiterate what Susan was saying there, that, you know, our findings as well, as the councillor has said, in terms of print, in terms of medium now is as effective. We put a lot of our time and effort into social media activity. We do have a very diverse offer and one of the best ways we found to present that diverse offer, we've through film, both in terms of short clips through social media and wider filmography that we produced around reassuring residents and visitors about coming to Winchester, but then also around some thematic campaigns we're doing around health and wellbeing. And we will continue to do that work. And as Sue said, we'll, through a staged approach, following the government's roadmap, we will increase the geographic draw of that activity going forward.
Thank you both. I hope that was helpful councillor Fenton. Councillor Scott, you had a question?
Just a couple of points of mine Chair. On the point of branding, I quite like that phrase here, because I know that the City Council went under some branding about a year or two back. And it doesn't make a big difference if you get the brand in white, because remember, our cards used to be just plain with nothing on the back and then we had a brand, which actually, it makes something different. In regards to indoor markets, if you look at old photo, remember being there in Winchester, the indoor market used to be jury street and comments under photos on Facebook has a variety of, you know, people attached to indoor markets and they used to shop there. And it's a fascinating thing when you get some of the historical things that's happened. So sometimes it's funny how the wheel turns around full circle. And if we are talking about, and if we ever achieve it, if we do talk about indoor markets, we used to have one in jury street, so that helps. The other thing is, I think we do have, the Christmas market seems to be built over many years of good experience with people, specialists coming into the town for weeks in the shed or maybe two weeks over their three week period. And the footfall that goes through the Christmas market is phenomenal. So somewhere down the line, the Christmas market guys, girls who have put foot in back in the day when it was probably a couple of sheds with probably about a week or whatever, to what they do now is phenomenal. So they've got something right there which maybe we could incorporate in the High Streets, in the district, in the High Street in Winchester to replicate. Another thing interesting about Andrew's point is about advertising and it's interesting, I was on the Isle of Wight on holiday last week and just in a commercial break, when I saw Gold had some news on on the Isle of Wight, Winchester University advert popped up on the Isle of Wight. And there's a fascinating, no, maybe a minute, maybe two minutes maximum, but it was a really polished few sort of images and clips of young students around the campus of Winchester. And it just hit home straight away. So again, just sort of the points of fellow councillors are made, is getting the market right and all that sort of stuff and using multimedia on that respect. I've seen it in evidence last week. So straight away, the message came across simple but really, really well. So whoever did that at university, perhaps we could tap into that as well.
Thank you for those comments councillor and I didn't know about the indoor market in jury street and it's always good to look back on things that have been, so we can learn from them. And likewise with the Christmas market, I think this is the point about we need to speak to all of the providers of markets and understand where they are and how they've built and what the future could be. So absolutely need to have that engagement going forward. I think we're learning over this Covid period. I think we moved rapidly to much more of the digital platform. If people weren't coming into the visitor information centre, we couldn't hand out leaflets. So I think that digital approach is not only reaching more people and we're doing photography and filming that can be clicked and adapted and used many times, so it's much more flexible and therefore, you know, can be used for a longer period. And I think for us, it's proved, you know, to be very effective in reaching people. So and from a sustainability point of view, it's obviously better than printing lots of leaflets. So I think that's going to be a direction for us to really build up on that for our future marketing and campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Scott. Do I have any more questions? Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you Chair. You didn't think you'd get away without me having a go, could you? Thank you very much indeed Sue for the presentation and thank you for all the wonderful work that you and Andrew and all the team do in what has been a very difficult, very hard time and I know that you all have been working incredibly hard. So thank you so much for that. In terms of this, this report, I have sort of, I don't want to get into it in great detail because there are lots of bits and you could almost sort of pick apart endlessly. My background is very much in the High Street. I was a co-chairman of the European Urban Regeneration Council of the ULI. I spent 25 years developing the High Street in Shepherd's Bush, it's called Westfield London, the biggest shopping centre in the world. This is sort of my area. So I could go on for hours, but I suspect there was football to be watched, so we'll go for the short version. Councillor Brok is going to have a chat. What I worry about here is there's some good stuff in here. It's actually incredibly city, High Street focused and I worry about that. It seems to ignore other shopping areas within the city and it does look at some of the market towns, interestingly enough, it talks about specific areas where they did research or where we left out, we can oddly. Denmead, for example, doesn't get a mention at all. Retail across the whole district is by its own needs a different approach. I mean, the Oxford and councillor Isaac's notes is much better than me, they have the specific requirements needed. And I know Melissa has in the last 10th of June been contacting the local market town to sort of say, look, you know, what are we going to do? What do you want to go and do? Some of the data is back on surveys from 2019 until pre-pandemic. We've set ourselves targets here, our objectives, you know, our measure of success, well, footfall will go up. I mean, it's going to get better because we're all vaccinated, some of us double dated our oldies and it's going to get better. But what we need to be doing is effectively using all the information we get. I mean, footfall, for example, which is referred to as a funding which we're going to record, I think, in the city centre, but probably not elsewhere. Really important to see what shops people go into and to use that information effectively to be working with owners of shops to rework what is an offer. Westfield, for example, they look at what the incoming trends are, they look at shops that are failing and they move to elsewhere and we can't do that so much because we're not the owners, but they do promotions in areas that are failing. They do, they look at the trends and they make sure we're ahead of that. Now, we've got, I mean councillor Radcliffe rightly mentioned, Debenhams, actually if you go out and look up the top of the stairs, look out there, there's a lot of empty stuff. Some of that's ours, some of that we should be doing pop-ups. There are really good ideas in here about flexible and co-working space. We need to be doing that, I mean, doing that.
Councillor Lumbey?
Excellent. So my question is this, can we please not use this as the basis of our two to three year plan, but actually step back and have a rethink on that, on the two, three year plan? And I would be very happy to work with councillor Todd and with any of our interested to assist with that, because I think we need to be looking much wider and can we be much more focused in the areas outside the city High Street, which I think needs its own strategy, and have individual plans for market towns, for areas like Denmead and for urban sort of sub regional shopping areas?
I'll come back quickly Chair on that. It was never the intention that this would be seen as a city High Street plan. It is for the district and we offer business support and do marketing and campaigns and through the Welcome Back Fund, we'll be looking to see how we can work with our market towns around the High Street. So again, if that's come across, that was not the intent and we'll review that and make sure that we address that. On the point of this being, some of the points you were saying about the development and the separate plans, I think this was the opportunity to get down, stuff that we want to get going is not the final plan and it wouldn't be the comprehensive picture of what we need to do across our district. I think that is work that we need to do over the next couple of years to get to that position. But it was a starting point to articulate to us, our businesses and our communities that we take our High Street seriously and we are acting from a proactive point rather than reactive, which we have done over the past 12 months. But I do take your points, thank you.
Thank you Sue. I have councillor Isaac's.
Thank you Chair. First of all, thank you very much indeed. I know Andrew and Susan, your team have done an amazing job and in my other hat as Chair of Commerce, I know that we've been liaising brilliantly with you guys over the whole of the second half of the pandemic as people engaged more. Sadly, we didn't have it initially in the market town, so it was really welcome that we had that stakeholder team meetings. I know councillor Todd, you've been to a few as well of those and, you know, I can't tell you, within our area, it's been extremely welcome. However, when I first read this plan, your hard work to all of that that you've come to achieve coming out to the communities is not reflected in this plan. I would not want people to see that that is the view of the council in relation to how my ward is perceived, which is that out of 2,150 people were questioned across the district and actually of those, probably three people, 67% said that Oxford didn't need anything, you know, clearly that's not the case. So I'm conscious that it gives the wrong impression to all the hard work that you guys have been doing, because I know how hard you've been working and how much you've been engaging. And whilst that was a base, I'd like to see that if it's in a proper formal plan that goes to the public, for people to see, that that's almost removed and it's put in to say, actually, we consulted, we did this, we found this, because this is not reflective of what is reality. Because clearly, you know, 60% knew nothing, nothing needs to change enough. Of course, things need to change. We have huge issues or we did have huge issues of footfall within Oxford compared to everybody else. You know, it got its own, like anywhere else, had its own. And, you know, it got its own, like anywhere else, has its own issues and problems. And so, you know, we are very lucky that as a town and there, we all come together very well through the pandemic. But I would really like to see more inclusivity in the wording of any plan that goes forward to reflect how actually you are engaging. Because it does, you know, as councillor Lumbey said, it's very, very register-focused and that's not what you're doing. You are across the district, you are liaising, you are forming stakeholder groups, you are forming opinions and you're doing action and work with those communities. So I'd just like to see it tweaking to reflect that, because it looks as if it is just excluded within this written plan. And that's not, you know, that's my thoughts on it. But thank you, because you've been really great.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you for those comments. And I do take your point about the, and also councillor Lumbey's point about that data perhaps being unhelpful and also a little bit historical now. So I think the conversations have progressed and developed and I think there's probably more that we can put in around that insight we gained from conversations with you than looking back at past surveys. So I think I would be happy to update that element of the plan.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any further hands. We've had quite a sort of detailed input on this, so unless anybody's got a burning contribution to make in debate, the, I think, obviously you've had some feedback on this, Sue, I hope that's what you're looking for. I think we've looked at the dimensions, things that we can add. And, but yeah, I think there's been reasonable feedback here. I hope that's useful for you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the conversation and the feedback was very useful, what I was looking for. Thank you.
And we will take the question of the market task and finish outside this meeting and get back to councillor Todd on that proposal. I think there'll be support for that, so I'm sure we will take you up on that topic.
Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you for all the comments that have been made. Yes, we're certainly, I know from working with the team, firstly, to pay tribute, as other councillors have done, to their incredible hard work during the last year and also to get things restarted. And I know, I know from a different business career from councillor Lumbey, working in fast-moving consumer goods, where you fight for every market share every week and every day, whilst also doing so in a way that builds your brand and your reputation and the substance of your business in the long term. And I think that's very much the way you need to look at what we're trying to do. The short term is the fight to recover the high street right now. But actually, a lot of the themes that you touched on, I hope will be reflected in the green economic strategy. And, you know, the green economic strategy, when we say it's a 10-year plan, is not meant to be a plan where in 10 years' time we turn up and start running around like, you know, chasing our tail. It will be something that starts as soon as it agrees, you know, as soon as it's agreed to take us in that direction. So some of the points you were making about 25-minute city, thinking about sub-census within the city, thinking about third space working and all of these kind of things are something that, you know, as soon as that plan's agreed, probably even before, we will be aiming to hit the ground running on that. Because my experience in the world of business is you have to run from the first minute to get to your 10-year goal.
Thank you, councillor Todd. I think we've closed that item. We've just finally, we're going to, I think, touch on the digital Winchester project. Andrew, did you want to just bring us up to date on where we are on that?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. And I will be sensitive given the constraints that we have. So just to sort of remind the committee that we're working on a digital Winchester project. Activity around this programme has been a little delayed due to the conflicting priorities brought around about by the pandemic. And as we've heard today, the priority focus of the economy team on direct business support over the last year. But that being said, we still recognise the absolute importance of the digital Winchester work and its relevance within the green economic development strategy and indeed elements of the high street plan as well. So just to update the group, there are a live set of webpages on our main Winchester City Council website around the digital Winchester project and a number of press releases to raise awareness of the programme have been undertaken. A resident business survey has also been undertaken. The first round has yielded 120 responses and we have a second round currently operating. We're moving forward with the next strand of work, which is around the expert evidence and call for action and content of that is being undertaken. Once that expert evidence is received, we will be curating the webpages to illustrate the outcomes of the surveys and the expert evidence. And that will then underpin and stimulate a debate, a virtual debate, that we are planning in early September. And so then the ultimate element will be to bring the findings of that to the next policy committee towards the end of September. I did just want to highlight some of the initial things that we had back from the first round of the survey. The majority of recipients have been around professional scientific, technical, information and communications and accommodation and food sectors. The age profile has been 35 to 65 in the main. The main uses of digital technology from the recipients have been around the things I think we would expect, working from home, obviously quite a significant change as a consequence of the pandemic, banking and shopping, and also keeping in touch with friends and family. In terms of digital skills, the recipients reported that they had in the main excellent and good digital skills. But in terms of skills requirements, they were keen to see more things around online webinars and encouragement to employees to invest more in IT skills for their staff. The main providers around the digital platforms were, as we'd expect, BT, Sky, Virgin and PlusNet. And quality of broadband service, which we know is a challenge across the district, the findings are showing a third of the recipients dissatisfied, a third of the recipients satisfied and the remaining third somewhere in between. But that just gives you a flavour of the initial responses that we've had to that survey. We've gone out to a second survey, obviously, to stimulate more content, more robust intelligence as a result. And that we will certainly bring an update to the next committee meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate that. And certainly on the question of broadband quality, I've been getting some feedback from some of our newer councillors who are saying that it's as much problem in urban areas as it is for quite a number of people as it is in the rural question. So I think there is a challenge for us getting our head around that threshold that we want to hit with broadband quality across the district. Do I have any questions for Andrew on this at the moment? Councillor Lumbey?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andrew. 120 responses, how many people are there in the district? Was the survey done electronically or in writing? And if it was electronically, are there barriers to being able to respond if you have lousy broadband or if you have your own IT issue to yourself, like you aren't able to access or do a survey? I.e. are we getting to all the people?
I think that's very much one of the founding reasons why we've gone back out. 120 recipients is obviously low and not robust in terms of a research piece of work. It is an online electronic survey, but we have actually put in our press releases the opportunity to have written content back also from recipients. But we will continue to look at that in order to ensure that we get a more thorough feedback as best that we can.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, I'm not seeing any other movements at the moment, so I think we may consider that a break for your briefing and we look forward to the follow-up in September. But I do think it's worth us taking the time to get that quality of input that we need. And clearly, as this is such a foundation of, we'll have an important part in the economic strategy as well, it's worth us taking that time and making sure we get the input. And also just pick up again that question about digital inclusion. I think we just need to make sure that we're covering that there. Thank you. I think that's it as far as the agenda is concerned. Thank you very much, all of you, for your time and input this evening and I'll call the meeting to a close.